Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start this public hearing. Today is the public hearing for the 2025 preliminary budget. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of whose name is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're here today to discuss the 2025 preliminary county budget. We're all going to take public comment. You'll have five minutes to speak. Just please, when you get up to the podium, if you just address us with your name and your location. Before we take public comment, we would just like to discuss the 2025 preliminary budget and just go over some of the high points. On October 15th, Commissioner Matt McGoyne and I introduced a preliminary 2025 county budget after months of working on it. Before we begin this evening, we just want to check through some facts. As you're all well aware, we had no choice but to raise taxes roughly 33%. This is the first major tax increase since 2012, when the real estate taxes rose by 37.5%. From 2013 through 2024, millage increased by 23%. Increases occurred in 2013, 2020 specifically for the pension at that time, and 2024. Since 2013, and I want to make sure everybody listens closely to this point, the county's operating expenses have soared 79% from $91,542,597 to $164,499,454. So they've risen by 79%. Keep in mind that Commissioner McGoyne and I just took office in January. Now, while the expenditures skyrocketed over that period of time, the county revenue has risen only by 27% due to the failure of successive administrations to ensure that revenue matched expenditures. So if I had to sum up the county's problem in a few sentences, that would be it through the years. Your expenditures went up like this and your revenue stayed flat. So that is the inherent problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Gahin. We started addressing foundational structural reforms well before we started working on this specific budget. Soon after taking office in January, we entered the state's strategic management planning program. Using a $100,000 grant from that program along with county funds, we hired the financial consultant PFM to help guide us through 2024, recommend long-term budgetary changes and operational changes to increase efficiency and lower costs. Some of you may remember that we did eliminate the county Department of Health. And when Commissioner Gahin and myself got in office, here was one of the priorities for us to take a deep dive into that and found out that 80%, 20%, that 80% reimbursement from the state was not real. And because we discovered that it had been founded on a faulty financial premise, that would impose the vast majority of costs on local taxpayers rather than on the state government. That alone will save three and a half million dollars a year.
Acting on recommendations from the financial experts which we hired, we instituted a hiring freeze and we put a hold on all purchasing other than for public safety and essential services. It's also very important to note that the county now is operating responsibly. One of the biggest problems that we confronted when taking office is that the previous administration had essentially budgeted 12 months of revenue and 13 months of expenditures by leaving us, and what we inherited, $18 million in unpaid bills. So think about this for a minute. And I don't want anybody in this room to think that we're playing the blame game, but when you got to raise taxes nearly 33%, I think people would want the commissioners to explain how the heck we got here. In fact, over the last few weeks, people have asked me, quite frankly, "How did you get here?" So this is what we're doing before we take questions and take comments. So we inherited $18 million, $18 million in unpaid bills from previous administrations. When we first took office, we got calls from vendors, "We have not been paid since last summer. How could that be?" And that's one of the questions that we asked. So we're glad to report that we are paying the county bills on time and we will not carry over unpaid bills into 2025. Only very small ones, and that just so happens to be because of the timing.
And after we started the formal budget process this summer, we found that the projected structural deficit was more than $35 million. We managed to reduce that projected deficit by more than 20% to about $28 million. Along, and again, Commissioner Gahin and myself, for months now, you've had the conversation of, "You have to cut, you have to cut, you have to cut." You can't cut your way out of what we were handed when we took office in January. I mentioned eliminating the Department of Health earlier. We identified 90 full-time and part-time positions across 19 departments, almost 10% of the budgeted workforce that were funded but not filled. We eliminated those, producing more than $2 million in savings. That is a major operational reform because now if a position is not funded and filled, it does not exist and cannot be allocated funding without specific approval from us. Also, to reduce the projected deficit and slow the rise of the expense curve, we budgeted no raises for non-union employees in 2025 rather than the 2.5% raise that had become customary, which will lead us to a savings of $400,000.
This budget also marks the first serious effort in memory to rein in the county's runaway healthcare costs. The county's healthcare premiums were scheduled to rise by 9% in 2025, or roughly $2.8 million. Our financial experts, PFM, which works extensively with county and municipal governments statewide, informed us that Lackawanna County has one of the most generous healthcare plans in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Our budget increases deductibles and co-pays for nearly 350 non-union employees, mostly in administration and management, including ourselves. We won't know the savings until the current open enrollment period ends, but they will be significant. So if you're asking yourself, "How did we get in this position?", it's because previous administrations gave away the store. They gave away the store in terms of the healthcare. No one stopped and questioned, "Can we afford this?" We sat down with the healthcare consultants and they told us point-blank, "You have one of the richest healthcare plans in the state of Pennsylvania, but nobody asked, 'How can you afford it?'" So we're taking the first step in order to rein that in. Also, we cut overtime costs in this budget by $1.25 million and have called on the county prison and the sheriff's department to achieve those savings through better scheduling.
In 2025, we also will establish priority-based budgeting, a further effort to examine every aspect of county business and budget according to actual priorities rather than past practice. We will also implement CashBest, a system by which the treasurer should be able to extract far more investment revenue from the county's regular cash flow. We cannot budget a figure for that program at this time because it is new, but the results from other counties that have used it have been really encouraging. The budget also is a major step in finally funding the pension plan. Failing to fund the pension was a major factor in the county's recent credit rating downgrade by standard reports. Essentially, past administrations either put nothing towards a pension plan or a normal amount. The effect it had was the minimum payment continued to grow. So for example, it's like having a really, really large credit card bill and only paying the minimum. Doesn't make any sense.
Finally, very important context for every county budget is that most of the county's spending is for crucial services that are mandated by state law, either are fundamental to public safety or both. More than 66% of Lackawanna County's employees are engaged in providing those essential mandated services, making it impossible to resolve these budget issues simply by cutting services. Commissioner McGoyne and I did not want to begin our four-year term as county commissioners in our first budget by raising taxes 32%. We are both raising our families with small children. We both have parents who are senior citizens and we completely understand the frustration of having to pay more in taxes. But we promised back in January when we took over that we were going to be honest. We've given it to you straight. These are the difficult decisions that we had to make, but we'd like to say that there is light at the end of the tunnel, and this is the first step to getting the county's financial house in order. And I'll just end on this. I've had, as you can imagine, a lot of people call, email, both myself and Commissioner McGoyne, "How could you do this? How could you raise taxes 32%?" We could go into more detail. We just laid out the highlights of why we are where we are, and I think it's important for everybody in this room in Muzik, in the Down Valley, and all throughout Lackawanna County to understand how we got here. It's because of a lack of leadership and people who previously served in these positions, both Democrat and Republican, Democrat and Republican, both parties, and I don't think it matters what party it is, but I just want to point that out, that didn't pay attention to the previous CFOs who clearly identified that the train was going down the tracks and it was coming off the tracks. So unfortunately, this is the position that we're in. We don't have a choice but to make these decisions, but we are going to improve the county's financial condition. So in saying that, we'll now open it up. If you'd just like to come up and state your first and last name, you have five minutes, and we'll entertain any comments.
Give us one second, please, sir.
Just so everyone's aware, Commissioner Chirmac is here, but he's on the phone and told us to start without him, just so everyone is aware. So we were going to wait, but he told the sheriff to start without him. Sir, go ahead if you could state your first and last name.
Yes, my name is Mark Powell. I live in Manuka for 50 years, and this is outrageous, 33%. I mean, these seniors can't afford it. The governor, does the governor know about this? He just made a rebate for the seniors. And you're going to raise the taxes 33%? I thought it was 3.3%, what my girlfriend told me. I thought she's out of her mind. And another thing, why do you have to hire somebody to take care of your money, our money? Every time I look at the paper, you're hiring somebody to take care of the money. Can't you take care of it? That's your job?
Would you like me to answer that question?
Yes, yes, sir.
So we entered in January, the state has a program called the Strategic Management Planning Program. So for the first time in recent memory, we hired experts to come in and take a top-down analysis of every single department, every single part of county government. It's a large bureaucracy with over 1,100 employees. We were given a $100,000 grant from the state government to bring in these experts, and one of their reports is right there if you want to take a look at it. They actually were extremely helpful, and they're continuing to engage the county. We felt that we, you're correct, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure this stuff out, but to do a really deep dive and to have someone take an objective, independent look after years of mismanagement, we thought that it was important. And I think it's paying off. And that's just my honest.
Well, another sentence, does the governor know that you're going to raise taxes in Scranton 33%?
I don't know.
You don't know that? He'll find out. Because he just gave the seniors a rebate, and now you're going to take it from them. The seniors, they don't have nothing. They're on social security. You know, could I ask you how much you pay in taxes? Do you pay taxes?
I do, I live in Southside.
You, sir?
Do I pay taxes?
Yeah.
Yes.
How much?
It's none of your business.
Okay, okay. I just wondered. All right, that's all, I got to go home.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address that?
Lee Morgan. What I really think needs to happen here is that we need to consider turning the county over to the state and dissolving the county government. Because if we can't find solutions to our problems, I mean, the situation is that the tax base can't sustain anymore, and there's a reassessment coming. And to be honest with you, I think we should be thinking about shutting whole departments and just... There's no easy answer to these problems and to say that someone else was elected and, "Well, they didn't do it, we inherited this." That doesn't save the ordinary person from the abuse that they're suffering at the hands of their elected government. And the abuse has to stop, and the only way to really make it stop is to unincorporate the county and turn it over to the state. And we can all play silly games, and we can raise 33% taxes now and then do reassessment. And all you have to do is really look at the county. I mean, all the money that's been wasted in developments that took place and then they were sold to somebody else, and there's no real outreach as far as I'm concerned to bring business or industry here. We're just playing a spinning little game here where the county's going to become a major employer, okay, and the taxpayers are just going to pay for it. And when we start talking about mandated departments, we'll then integrate them and cut them right to the bone. If there's 10 people in two departments, combine them into one and cut their staff down to five. I mean, it's time to really not raise taxes. I mean, this is only my opinion, but I think that we should all pay attention on Election Day because what I think's coming is, I think, a landslide for Trump, and that's not a political thing. People are so disgusted the way our government's run that they want to change, and they're just tired of the party structures. And when you take a look at the Republican Party, like I've said before, the working-class people took that over. They threw the old staunch Republicans out. And when you look at history, a long time ago, the Democratic and Republican Party were one party, they split. The Democrats were pro-slavery and the Republicans were anti-slavery. And what's really happened here in our county is all the property owners are slaves to the government. We're taxed on our wages, we're taxed on our electric bill, all of our bills are taxed. And it's time for all that to stop, and you were elected to make decisions. And I respect that. But it's time to cut whole departments, take a cleaver to all the employment, and just cut the county to the bone. Or either, if you don't want to do that, take the county and give it to the state. Okay? Just like Scranton should, that's what Scranton should have did. Scranton should have dissolved itself and gave itself to the county. And then in the law, there's an X amount of years, and then the county can reconstitute itself, and that's what has to happen to the county. We'll still be stuck with some of the debt, but we have to rebuild a government that's responsive to the people and that the people can afford. And what we've created is a huge bureaucracy that just doesn't function. And then we elect people that make a ton of promises that they're going to go fight for us, and we really don't need them to fight for us. We need them to work to make government work, and it's not working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, folks. William Torbeck, Dunmore, Pennsylvania. It's great to see a lot of familiar faces, and thank you for coming out tonight, gentlemen. Thank you for being out there. I'll start off by a couple of quotes that I've read about where do we go from here as a community, as citizens? Let me just say, the comments I've read here are out of Reason Foundation, and it pertains to privatization, okay? And former Governor Mario Cuomo made a comment, "It's not the government's obligation to provide services, but to see that they are provided, the services are provided." Okay, that's one comment. That was from a Democrat, Mario Cuomo. The next one was from Richard Daley, Mayor Richard Daley, in March of 2009, made a comment about privatize everything you can. Privatize everything you can. Do we know how much the assets that Lackawanna County is holding to where we can sell it, sell that land, sell land, sell property to where it once again becomes a tax, it could be a boost to tax environment in this region? I mean, there's a lot of property out there, I'm sure, that can be sold to private enterprise. Okay, the private enterprise does work. Why don't we allow it? Okay? That's, maybe do an analysis, I'm sure we can find some savings. Now, Commissioner Gahin, usually, and I'll use a football analogy, in the first quarter, you don't usually throw Hail Marys, usually throw desperation. The comment you made the other night about Minority Shirmack made you look very small. You called him a liar. And I think it would be very big if you apologized to him and the citizens for being very childish. Okay? I'll leave it at that. I'll leave it at that. Now, I found this whole, these documents on the website out of Reason Foundation, written by the Vice President of Local Government Private Privatization. And in here, it has pros and cons on what we can do and make this government effective and work for the people. And I wish you would consider privatizing some of your, you could privatize some of your healthcare. You could privatize, like I said, I recall reading about how Lackawanna County had a baseball team, a baseball team. They had property out in downtown Scranton. The opportunity to privatize would have had a downtown ballpark, which would have been magnificent, but the county chose not to privatize. Would have been a great idea having a downtown ballpark. Would have been traffic down there, it would have been beautiful. It was right around the time when you were at Penn State, man. So that being said...
I agree with you. That would have sounded wonderful.
We move on from here, right? We move on from here as a community, because nobody wants to see this. And we're looking at some dire times. And yes, you guys have a tough job to do, but let's step up and come up with some ideas, because I haven't heard any ideas about privatization. Okay? That said, I wonder, I think the source was WVIA, are we still spending $750,000 on a mobile library that's not due out until, what, next year?
That was from a grant, I believe. We got a grant for that.
A grant? It wasn't?
I'm sorry, we used ARPA funding for that.
I'm sorry, funding?
We used American Rescue Plan Act funds, and that was approved.
It was also a grant.
A grant, American Rescue.
Okay, I'm all for education and I'm all for reading, but $750,000 on a mobile library that's not due till next year, custom Maine, my dear, just a little out there. Okay? So anyway, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bob Ballis, Scranton. I took a look at what you want to invest in the community. First of all, PNC Field, we should be generating enough revenue from that so it doesn't have to cost taxpayers to fix PNC Field. Other one is Montage Mountain launched the Save Streets program. That's what we have police for, to do what we're doing. If people are that stupid and can't drive, they shouldn't be on the road in the first place. Okay? So we're spending money for needless to worry about a saved street? Look at the interstates, look at the idiots that drive out there today that are road rage crazy, want to jam their brakes on in front of you. They don't like what you're doing. The Pocono Trail from El Morris, the dump, is on schedule. Why do we need another trail right now? Why do we need Riverfront Park in downtown Scranton? We have enough right now with the walking trail that people could walk, do what they're doing. We don't need to spend the money right now at the expense of everybody here. You're worried about against gangs and violence. Well, this didn't just start. This has been going on for a long time, and you could thank the President and Vice President for the gangs opening the borders and letting millions of people come in here that had no business coming through the borders. So put the blame where the blame is. If we want to take care of that, then let Joe Biden and Kamala Harris and Tampon Tim pay the bill for us to take care and protect our streets and our citizens. You're helping expand through Chamber of Commerce and such things. I mean, I've seen companies fold here because we couldn't get the help with banks and everything else around here. And the butter is watershed. I mean, we're trying to do critical service, we already have services. Let me explain something. I've lived in Scranton my whole life. I went to U, I went to Penn State. The rule of God is the Jesuit inner that controls the University of Scranton. Am I correct in that? The rule of God, sexism between a man and a woman, they patronized a queer organization at the University of Scranton.
Mr. Ballis, this is about the budget.
No, no, please let me finish. It's my five minutes.
This is about the budget. We don't need your views on gay marriage and things like that.
It's about the budget, Gahin. Please, no, I'm talking about...
The budget. Well, turn it around to the budget, or I'm going to have you sit down.
Let's not go there again.
Well, talk about the budget.
You already did my arm here the last time.
Okay.
And that's not over with. By them paying and eliminating...
This is a budget hearing.
...eliminating their tax-exempt status, based on that, the only thing that should be exempt is the chapel. They should now pay taxes because they violated the rule on their own. They should be paying taxes on every single property in the Commonwealth that they have, number one. That's part of the budget. That's putting money back in our pockets that belongs there. And every nonprofit out there that has not contributed, when we provide a service, whether it's police, fire, DBW, should be at the cost, what it costs us to operate those units and people. They're not paying taxes, then they're not entitled to free service. Everybody in the city that pays taxes is entitled to that service because we're paying for it. Those were your cuts. Now, the next thing is, if you operate it as a business, you will make the cuts necessary by duplicating people to do the jobs. I stick with Lee Morgan, what he had to say, he hit it right on the head. We don't need to sit here and say we're governing, we got to do the hardcore things, and you cut expenses. Therefore, you don't have to justify it by raising revenue at the taxpayers except that the senior citizens, that you're going to bankrupt and are going to lose their homes. On top of that, the reassessments coming, so they're going to get reassessed, they're going to get punched in the face twice, and we're not doing a thing about it. Whether the past administrations here did something or didn't do it, the past is gone. The president is now, and the future doesn't belong to anyone. The hardcore job is your job right now...
Thank you.
...to do what's right for the people in this community, and you got to make the cuts and stop taking it out of their pockets.
Thank you.
Rosalinski Old Forge, I can't believe you have the audacity to sit there and say you have no other way than to raise taxes. You have senior citizens that can't afford medication. You have families that can't afford to feed their children yet buy them necessary supplies. And, okay, you want to raise taxes? Who bails them out when they overspend? Why should the taxpayers bail out when you mismanaged our money? Not you, former commissioner. Just because it's easy? We need to get creative. There is so much spending that needs not to be, and there's more places to cut. Children protective services, for one, is so wasteful, it's pathetic. Did you look at it? They pay for attorneys that don't show up. They pay for attorneys that don't call you back. And if they do it for five people, there's money right there. Do we look into these other places, the sheriff's office? Where all this money's going? We need to get creative and not just say, "Let's raise taxes." People can't ease, and we're just going to raise taxes? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for coming to Music Borough. My name is Marilyn French, and I live at 116...
Excuse me. Could we have quiet in the audience, somebody speaking?
I live at 116 Columbia Street in Muzik, and I'm also in my first term as a Music Borough Council member. So we really appreciate you guys coming down to the borough and talking through this with us. Some questions that I have, and you've kind of talked about it before, you know, I'm in my first term, you're in your first term, so I'm interested to hear about, you know, when I'm listening to you speak and thinking about the budget, some... when, when I'm listening to you speak and thinking about the budget, some things that are coming to my mind are too big to manage. Is this too big to manage? And what are, you, you talked about operational efficiency and that's a lot of what I'm seeing down here in Music Borough. We have some of these issues too where there might be some operational waste. So, you talked about eliminating the Health Department, eliminating 90 physicians. What are some other ways that you're looking at holding department heads accountable for making sure that they are being, be tight on keeping their finances in order?
So, I'll give you one example. When we took office, we found out that they did not have really staff meetings. If they did have a staff meeting, it was maybe once a year and it was all the department heads in a room like this and everybody just kind of read from a script. Now, that's what we've been told. We are having staff meetings every month and we're doing it by breaking because there's over 30 departments. So, we broke the departments down by which ones kind of fit with and worked with the other ones because there's a lot of cross collaboration. So, they're, just in doing that alone, we, just because there's more communication now, we were able to find ways to become more efficient, have departments work better together. I'll give you one small example, not a huge cost savings, but in, in having these meetings, we found out that the county was paying for a service that it didn't use. So, and I'll give you, I'll tell you what it was.
This happens here too.
Yeah. So, the, without going into a big, long story, the county hands out payroll checks every, every payday. So, we waste money on paper. We paid for a program the last few years in order to do that all online, which, you know, where I used to work, you logged into the computer, you clicked a button, you saw your payroll, your pay stuff and you could print it out in your W2. We have somebody sit in the lobby of the government building and literally hand out the checks. Makes no sense.
Right.
So, starting in January, we're going, we're getting rid of that process and it's all going to be done online. Not a huge savings, it's not going to change the world, it's not a panacea, but there's one example and we're finding that almost monthly, things that we could do to become more efficient just by having the Commissioners honestly be present. The one thing that we, we were told is that nobody was showing up. That can, when I'm talking about the Commissioners, they weren't there. And that is a big problem. When the leadership isn't there, you know, people run amok. And so, we're there every day and I don't want to pat on the back for that. I get paid to be there. But I, I think leadership starts with being there on the ground and we are working through all these issues every day.
And just two quick things there. You mentioned looking at department heads and things like that. I think it was, ma'am, I think you may have mentioned something about the Sheriff's Department a little bit earlier that I, I hope I can maybe address and answer for you. So, and if you need a legal definition, that's why Don is here. But our rural officers have what's known as 1620 rights. So, they reserve the right to hire whoever they, they want to be able to hire. And when you're looking at departments as well, whether it's a 911 center, our Sheriff's Department, our prison, we can take the job away, but the shift doesn't go away. So, that's, that's a bigger part of the picture, I think, as well. And ma'am, I hope, maybe that answered.
Okay, ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't want it to get unruly. Well, we could. No, no, we could talk after the meeting, but we just not taking questions from the audience. Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate the insight into that and I think a lot of what, what I'm seeing and what I'm experiencing has to do with lack of communication or presence. So, I appreciate that perspective that you're sharing with us. Another thing I want to thank you for is the commitment to invest in tourism in Lackawanna County that has a major impact on Music Borough specifically with PNC Field. So, we definitely appreciate that, that attention. One area that I have some questions about and that I want to talk more about maybe in a different forum would be the Visitors Bureau budget and how we could get some kind of insight into that because we'd like to play a more active role in what's, how are we attracting tourism to Music Borough and how could Music Borough really be a partner to the county in that way? I think that would benefit all of us.
And I think Kirk Camoni would be somebody great for you to talk to as well.
Perfect.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Frank Seraphini, Alpine Drive. It's a pleasure to be able to see you in Music Borough. Thank you. And I'm just wondering, how many employees are county employees? The number?
I think somewhere in the area of 1,100.
There's 1,100 employees?
Roughly.
Now, I mentioned this before, the prison overpayment, the Commonwealth, the prison healthcare provider. According to the records that I was able to get, they could be, they could be in the neighborhood of eight or 900,000. And that was going to be addressed by the previous administration and I'm sure that they have not done that. And I'm wondering whether you were going to be able to get a forensic audit of the payments to, to that healthcare company.
Frank, I think a prison board meeting might be a better setting for, for you.
Well, this has to do with the budget. That's okay. Now, on page eight of 52, eight, I was just noticing, and you mentioned it earlier, which I think was very, very important. The amount of health insurance paid for perhaps, say, general maintenance. The salaries are 965,000, health insurance is 498,000. It's almost half. That, is that what you've been trying to cut? Who has, who carries the health insurance?
So, there's a couple of different plans.
Okay.
But we had to start with the, we're not cutting healthcare, we're just simply.
No, no, no.
Asking people to pay more. We had to start with the non-union, which includes the Commissioners and all the administrative staff to pay a higher deductible and to pay increased copays. We have to negotiate with the unions and we're starting off right, and we're in negotiations now with the SEIU. We can't just go in and, you know, increase deductibles and copays for the, the union staff. We have to negotiate that.
Right. Now, who puts the contracts for healthcare out? You or the union?
The administration does that.
The administration does that?
Yes.
In other words, is that the best deal that you could get out there in the free market? Is half of the salaries are the healthcare costs?
So, that is what we have, our healthcare consultant and they've changed hands the last couple of years, but they go out and they go back and forth for whatever the best rates are, yeah.
Well, a new healthcare consultant might be in order, in my opinion. The other thing that I was looking at is PFM is from Philadelphia. They're not local and I'm wondering why you would hire someone from out of town when we have so many quality accounting firms locally who could handle a budget analysis?
So, PFM was chosen after a committee was put together, including our CFO, Dave Bolzoni. We had to put a request for proposals out.
Right.
Across the state and they were the, the top firm that, that responded. And you have to have some experience, Mr. Bolzoni, right? With the strategic management planning process because it's a statewide process.
And Frank, I think it's a good thing too, we talked a little bit about it earlier, having somebody from outside the area coming in and really doing a deep dive and really taking a fresh look at things.
The only issue that I have with that is when they come in and they analyze the budget, they're not aware of the fact that the county has thousands and thousands of homes that could be up for sheriff's sale tomorrow if you wanted to put them up because of people who could not afford their taxes. There, it's not just a few that you show up at a judicial sale or sheriff's sale that are up for sale. There are a lot of homes and God bless the people. You, you understand, you've been there. Just that, I, I feel sorry for those people. And InfoTech, the information technology, there's wages and salaries of almost 800,000 and yet there's service contracts of 2,053,000. Why do you need so many service contracts when you're paying 800,000 for wages and salaries and information technology?
So, I believe InfoTech is the program that's used by the Recorder of Deeds, the Clerk of Judicial Records. Am I right in that?
Correct, yeah. They provide an online service.
They provide those online services so that you can access those public documents.
So, they subcontract for those services or do they use? Well, in other words, what, what do the salary and staff do for 784,000 that warrants hiring 2,053,000 in service contracts?
So, what, what part of the budget are you looking at?
It's page 13 of 52. I might be outpaced.
He means IT.
Oh, IT. Okay. Your time is up, but if you want to jot these questions down, Frank, or email them, I, I promise you we'll get an answer to you.
Could I mention one more thing real quick?
Quickly, yeah.
At 2311 Adams Avenue, 11 people moved into that home at midnight, just to make you aware.
Okay.
The sewers are running down the street.
Thank you.
I, I'm going to let you know that later.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate your coming to me.
And if you, if you email us, we'll get you an answer to that question.
Thank you very, very much. Very.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Segona. I'm, I live in Taylor. I came here tonight to talk about a few things in regards to transparency in the process. And I'm curious, I guess when I'm looking at the budget, it's, you know, numbers and that's great, but I guess was there any planning in terms of the narrative going along with it? I'm sure it will be published with the Budget Book, but I'm curious when I'm coming.
Yes, that, so, and that is one of the, do you mind if I answer?
Yeah, yeah, please.
But one of the things that I disliked about this entire process as we took it over was it's almost meant for people not to understand it.
Yeah.
So, if you look at that preliminary budget, it's just numbers on a sheet. It doesn't have anything to back it up and explain like Mr. Seraphini got up and was saying, well, what's this, what's that?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, how would he know that? Because unless you're in it like we are, it's impossible.
Exactly.
So, we hired a company called Digital Budget Book and we've been working with them over the last several months.
That, the name is Clearka?
Yes. So, you will see a completely different product by the time the final budget is released and then next year, this will be totally different.
Okay, good.
They're preparing the narratives now and there'll be a product that I think will be much, far more understandable to the public.
Good. I wanted to make sure it wasn't like, okay, this is the good process, we're going to do this again next year.
No.
It's definitely not, I guess, I, one of my big concerns is that we come to these hearings and, you know, it's, it's great and all, but all that we have is a list of numbers and you're going to get questions like, what's this? What's that? What's this? What's that? And other counties across the country, they have specific notes on each line item if something big changes. And I guess the, the other main thing I wanted to bring up was OIFs. I know there's a lot of changes happening and I've read the press release and all of that, but there's a $10 million increase in that and you've no, you've noted the $28 million shortfall. That could make it an $18 million shortfall. So, I feel like the public would need some sort of justification for that $10 million dollars at some point.
Yeah, would you like me to explain that?
Yeah.
So, one of the huge, and when we took over in January, that was one of the biggest issues that we inherited was an agency that essentially was all over the place. You, you understand that the, there were caseworkers that were arrested by the District Attorney's Office, so there's a hu- huge issues there. So, we were down to roughly, I want to say in the area of 15 to 20 caseworkers for over 4,000 general, just general protective service cases coming through our door.
Right.
Impossible to handle. So, the agency was at an all-time low. Because we don't have, didn't have the caseworkers, we had to contract those services out because if we don't provide those contracted services, we get in huge trouble as an agency.
Right.
And that's the state telling us to do that. So, that is why you see that. That's mainly the reason for that large increase.
But then can't you reduce the number of staff that are internal, like the vacant positions and all of that?
Well, it's a catch 22. What we would like to do, we've been hiring caseworkers, we're at about 50% capacity now and that's because of some of the things that we've been able to do with the civil service, with the state and because of, I know everyone hates the word consultant, but we hired a really talented individual named Beth MacRae, who's been able to open some doors for us in the state. But because we've hired so many caseworkers in a short amount of time, it takes a while to train them.
Yes.
It's not like you can just put these people out on the street and expect them to solve all these people's problems. So, over time, we would like to bring some of these programs back in-house, but that is going to take time. I mean, that, well, it's one thing we don't have on our side now, is time.
Yeah, I guess, all that's, that's good to hear and I guess it would be.
And that will be in the narrative with.
It would be great to see it like written out, especially just in the future before these hearings because it's, you're setting yourself up to fail a little bit here.
Well, let me, and, and you're right, but let me explain what has happened here before and I think Mr. Bolzoni would agree with me. In the past, we did things totally different this year.
Yeah.
In the past, they took the preliminary budget, it was, and this is in the government building, it was thrown on the desk, the chief of staff read the budget message, Commissioners sat there and then they walked out and took no questions. We did it the exact opposite. We had a press conference, we took questions from the press, we were prepared and so we did it the opposite way. The other thing that we, we did was we said, here's what, here's exactly what the budget is, here's the tax increase, not, oh, here's what the deficit is and we're going to work really hard to get it down and as they've said in the past, sharpen our pencils and use our razors. It, it's, it was inflated so that they could bring it down and look like heroes. We're giving you the straight facts. This is what it is. We've been working on this for months and months and months and months. But I do agree with you and this whole process next year will be, I think, a lot more, even more transparent than it is now.
Awesome. That was, that was everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Frank Tempa, Old Forge, recently retired on fixed income and now I can see how the funds can disappear pretty quick. 33% tax this year on top of the 6% last year, that's 40% in one year. And the timing couldn't be worse because that's a year before reassessment kicks in. The schools and the municipalities, it looks like they've already taken advantage of getting their millage up. In 2022, the schools, they outraised their taxes about 3, 4%. 2023, the municipalities, they outbumped theirs up about 2 mills on average. 2024, the county's kicking in 33% on top of the 6% we have, the 40%. And then 2025, everyone's going to get their reassessment value. So, your taxes are going to go up, your village is going to be up before you get your reassessment in the mail that shows that your property values just went up. So, that last bump is going to be a tax increase by no fault of anybody's because it's just going to be your, your elevated village times your assessment. So, I can't imagine what the residents are going to do when that happens, but so be it. But getting back to the county, so let's see what the county can do. Some of the other individuals here sort of went in a direction I was going in. Led me to believe, remember when Scranton was having financial straits about five years ago? What did they do? They dumped assets, they sold Scranton sewer 40. So, I just took a look around the website and said, what kind of assets does the county have? Maybe we could start with the 252 acres adjacent to Casey Highway? That Aylworth, Aylworth Park we have? What is the market value of that? Not the assessed value, but I'd be interested in what the market value status, 250 acres adjacent to Casey Highway? The next one I looked at was the 840 acres up there in the mountains above Carbon Hill, Merle Sernowski Park. 840 acres with a nice pond on it? What's the market value of that? These are two parks that I would say the majority of the 220,000 residents in this county don't even go to. Are they really necessary? If you want to make tough decisions, those are tough decisions that you guys can make. And to tell you the truth, we have enough parks in the area to begin with. Lackawanna State Park, Woodsboro State Park, Toby Hannah State Park, Palm Springs State Park, I don't even think the county needs to be in the park business. McDavid Park, that's a tough one. That's down in the residential area, seems to get a lot of activity from the residents, so that one we could save. But, the pool issue, please, don't put any more money into pools. They are the worst investment. If I understood, we put $3 million into a pool in McDavid Park for a couple of hundred kids to jump in two months out of the year. And that was when we were down probably about 10 million debt. That's just mind-boggling to me. Just stay out of the pool business, please. The other things I looked at was, it looked like we're paying a mill on my tax bill for arts and culture. Mill comes up to over a million dollars a year. Now, that's fine if you have discretionary spending, spend on arts and culture, but when you're in debt up to here, something's got to go. And I suggest that arts and culture village, get rid of that. The other thing on my bill, on my bill is three mills for libraries. It's like the 21st century. I mean, I don't even know if people go into the libraries anywhere. We're paying three mills for libraries. We have nine libraries in this county? Do we really need nine libraries? Take a mill off of that, reduce that to two. I mean, I'll give you some libraries, but bump it down to two mills. Get rid of the one mill. Those were just things, I just, you know, I just went through the website, looked at what we had and where we could eliminate some things. I mean, that's just, that was just my take on it. But one other, I'd just like to leave this last word of government. I don't think government should be involved in providing entertainment for the residents. Government should be providing basic services. The private sector, they'll take care of the entertainment business. And this was proven in Luzerne County. Luzerne County wanted to build the arena. Residents said, we are not paying for it. What'd they do? Let's put it on the ballot. Let the people vote. Do you want the arena? Luzerne County said, we don't want the arena. It was voted opt about, it was voted dominant about. But have you been driving down 81 lately? Is there an arena there? How did that happen? Nobody in Luzerne County is paying a dime for the arena, but it's sitting there. So just stay out of the entertainment business. I mean, the county used to be in the ski business, the movie-making business. We're in the minor league baseball business. We're having a hard enough time running this county, let alone getting into skiing and making movies. That's just my summary on. Lastly, Mr. Chirmack isn't here, but he said that in the paper, he said there was gonna be a volunteer, a volunteer budget study committee put together.
Sir, your time is up. I'll let you finish your.
Well, the last thing I wanna say, when that forms, I'd like to not only be on it, but I'd like to be the chairman of that volunteer committee if I may.
I think he's in the hallway, so you can probably talk.
I saw you. So thanks for your time. Thanks for coming back. That's just one resident's opinion in one direction we can go with.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
My name is Romaine Roman, and I'm a small business owner in Lackawanna County. Have you guys thought about recovery? The money that's lost? People that haven't paid taxes, things that are sliding? Because you keep feeding the same people that are paying the maximum amount. And as a business owner, I'm not just talking for me, I'm talking for the employees. Because it falls back on us. The employees come crying to us, we can't live on what you're paying us. And we keep giving them. And they don't even get to pay their bills, and their money's gone in taxes. There's nothing left for the small business to give. We can't compete with big companies. We have to find another way to do it. And recovery, I think, is gonna be a, is gonna be a big thing. Start going after churches, colleges. I heard the parking meters were just sold. There's not just taxes on them. You have to go, start going after other people besides small business owners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Miranda Pace, first-time homebuyer in Old Forge. Been there for almost a year now. So I'm sure you've heard all of the arguments under the sun for why to not do it. I understand that you've expressed that it is a culmination of a long time of bad things and funds being misappropriated.
Oh, it's not misappropriated.
Or not misappropriated, like not properly managed and spent. Yeah.
I just didn't want you to think that we said that someone did anything that was illegal. We did not say.
You didn't say that.
No.
That is my summary of how I understand it.
Okay.
So I understand that these things are things that need to happen. And although I would love for that to not happen, that would be very great. One, don't get rid of Merle Stenowsky Park. That's a great park. I use the libraries a lot. And there was one other thing, totally forget what that was. But is there, like, is there a way where, I'm sorry, starting over. This 33%, 32.7%, is that like the full amount, the full increase needed? Or is there more that will be coming, like, in the following years from what you guys can gather?
We can't say what will happen in the following years, but I'll tell you this. If we do things the right way, and if we follow the plan that's been put forward, I don't, we will not need a huge tax increase for the foreseeable future. In other words, if we're honest with the people and we don't kick the can down the road, and if there has to be, like, I'll give you an example. In the city of Scranton, when I was on council in 2013, the city was absolutely destitute. Went years without a tax increase. And then same thing here, sticker shock, double-digit. But if they had just been honest and raised them even incrementally, I'm talking 1.5%, 2.5%, 3% at the most, I think people can understand that. Obviously, what people can understand, including myself, is when the government has to raise it 32 or 33%. If we did nothing else in county government, just in terms of inflation and the cost of materials and supplies going up, you would need to find revenue somehow. Now, we're looking at making the government more efficient. We've cut 90 positions. We're looking at more potentially down the road through attrition in other areas. But to answer your question, no, if you do this the right way and you're honest with people, which I like to think we're being brutally honest. It's not gaining us any more friends or supporters, but just being blunt about it. I don't think you're gonna see this happen again as long as we stay on top of it and don't, you know, not show up to work and not ask questions and put the time.
Yeah, yeah, I can appreciate all that goes into trying to get things back on track. So with that, understanding that hopefully if all things go well, the 33% will be like the amount to get us back on track. But I heard people talking about how they're on fixed income. I'm a first-time homeowner, and part of what went into my purchase was the taxes. Obviously, understanding that, like, they go up like 3%, but the 33% is not something that I really had allocated in my budget as a first-time homeowner. So I was wondering, like, as you said with the incremental, is there a way to phase the tax amount? So like, we know it needs to happen, but maybe not having all 33% all at once at a time where we are going to be getting reassessed. Political powers at the national level are changing, and that's going to impact costs. So we're just in a really sticky time right now.
Yeah, I agree. If there was a way that we could have phased this in, I would, we absolutely would have did it. But because the ball has, the train has been going down the tracks and has almost fallen off, there's no other way to do this without, you know, shutting everything down. And like I said before, 66%, 66% of the government is mandated services and functions. So unfortunately, if we, hindsight's 2020. But if somebody, in terms of the people sitting in these positions years ago, was paying attention, you know, you could have, we wouldn't be sitting here today. All, everybody would be sitting here with the sticker shock of a 33% increase. But to answer your question honestly, there's no way to phase this in because of the large $28 million.
Yeah.
And I just wanna mention really quick that our CFO, Dave Bolzoni, is here. And he's raised concerns for years.
Who's Dave Bolzoni?
Right here. This handsome gentleman right there in the purple shirt.
Hello. Thank you. I'm sorry. I don't know anybody.
But, and Dave had raised concerns in the previous years with the previous administration. Unfortunately, it fell, it fell on deaf ears, which is why it is what it is at this point in time.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. And I'm glad to see the arts and culture is still in the budget. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Bob Benny, Mayor of Music. I wanna welcome everybody here tonight, especially the commissioners. Really glad that you came down to Music to explain your approach to this budget disaster. As an elected official myself, you have tough challenges and tough decisions to make. And I think the transparency and the approach that you're taking is great. I also wanna compliment everybody in the room that we could have this kind of discourse and this kind of discussion and difference of opinions and remain civil, right? I mean, that's great. In the environment we're in politically across the country, that's not always the case. But here in Music, in Lackawanna County, I have to commend everybody in this room that we're able to have a tough discussion about a very tough topic and be able to remain civil. And we can express our opinions and our differences of opinion. But I'm glad the commissioners chose to come to Music. I wanna welcome you here on behalf of the borough residents and share with us the transparency in your approach and how you're gonna go about solving these problems. Everybody that's paying attention knows that the can, right, wrong, or indifferent, Republican or Democrat, has been kicked down the road on all the different levels of government, right? On the federal level, state level, county level, and on the local level as well. First hard step to fixing the problem. So you have Music Borough's commitment to help and do what we can. We're connected together on Montage Mountain, and there's a lot of things we need to do there to make that situation better. And I could say that anytime I pick up the phone and I call any of the commissioners, any three of the commissioners, they answer the phone and they know who we are. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Would anyone else like to give a word? Sure.
Like that shirt, Joe.
You like that shirt? Joe Totino from Old Forge. The question I have is, is there anything you guys can do to go to Josh Shapiro, our governor, get on your knees, get in your car, go down and talk to him? Tell him the dire straits we need. He's got boatloads of cash down there. He just gave the Scranton School District $16 million because they were desperate, they were underpaid, underfunded by Governor Wolf. Is there anything that he can do to help any of the programs we have?
Would you like?
He's a Democrat. You guys are Democrats.
So it's unlikely that, because there's other counties in the same position. I'll give you one example, and this isn't like, it's no excuse. But Allegheny County is raising taxes, I think proposing their county executive 45% to 46%. Right, because similar to here, the can was kicked down the road over a number of years. I don't think they had a tax increase for 12 years. The real change has to happen with the state legislature and the way the county governments are able to generate revenue. Right now, our, one of our only ways, our only real way to get significant revenue is through a property tax increase. Well, I don't like that as much as anybody else. But if you're sitting in our seats, that's really one of the only ways that we can raise revenue if our expenditures go up. So we just met the other day with the president of CCAP, the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, to try to lobby them, get all the county commissioners together to work on the state legislature, to find different ways that we can raise revenue without putting it on the backs of taxpayers.
Right.
So I think that's the most effective way to, the system, the way county governments are funded has to be changed. It's an antiquated, outdated system. That goes for counties and, for the most part, cities as well.
And the thing with this state lottery and all this stuff, all the money that comes in from the lottery, supposed to be for senior citizens. I don't see, do you have to be poverty-stricken to get any of that money? Where is all that lottery money going? Does it come to the county? Do you guys see any money?
I, no.
Millions and millions of dollars they get in lottery.
Yeah, the only agency is the Area Agency on Aging that gets funding from the lottery.
Well, COLS is, but they're an authority. Yeah, they're not one of ours. COLS gets it for the busing.
The COLS gets the money?
COLS gets a lot of the money to pay for the busing, yeah.
Right. Yeah, but there's so much money there that, millions and millions of dollars, you can buy so many buses with that. There's gotta be money left. You see all the winnings people win in millions of dollars? So I would look into that, maybe the lottery. You could, who runs the lottery? The state, right?
The state, yeah.
So find out if you can get any money from that. Help all the counties, not just Lackawanna County.
Right.
I mean, to me, the seniors need help. Maybe they can get help with their taxes through the lottery. Give everybody, especially by income, especially the people that are on social security that are gonna lose their houses. It's a sad situation. So you gotta think out the box and do whatever you can to try to get this money. It's there. I know there's money in the state. They have bushloads of money in Harrisburg. Shapiro's got it. So how you, that's the thing, is how do you get it out of there to help the poor people with their taxes? So I would, I would give them a call, really, I would. Get in your car, go down and get on your knees and beg them, say, this is what we have. Help us out. See what he says. That's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Mark Zaccotti, he's the president. Couple of quick questions. About a year ago, around this time, the county commissioners passed the budget. At that time, there was no tax increase. There was an election held. You gentlemen won the majority. And then a few weeks after the election, they reopened the budget and said, whoa, no, we need to increase taxes. And then now you gentlemen have discovered this financial mess that we're in. So my first question was, was there any laws broken?
In terms of, what do you mean?
In terms of, okay, putting out false and misleading information. If you worked for a private company, you were the treasurer of a private company, and you put out misleading information, and that stock price went up, and then it turned out that that information you put out was false, wouldn't there be some sort of investigation? You know, isn't that a crime to put out like a budget that says, okay, there's no tax increase? The voters base their votes based on what information they had at that time. And then as soon as the election is over, you come back and say, oh, no, there's a tax increase. And then now you're finding out that there's this massive debt. Why wasn't that disclosed prior to the election?
So our solicitor is here. I think he can answer any questions pertaining to.
Well, there's no, I don't understand what, I mean, the budget is the budget. The commissioners that ran and passed the budget last year, they weren't running for reelection. So if you're trying to say they have.
When they have to be, you know, transparent with that budget?
Well, the budget is published. I mean, the numbers are the numbers, so, yeah.
Yeah, I just feel like that we were kind of misled with that budget because when you put out a budget and then three weeks later you come back and say, well, no, there's this massive hole, but three weeks before that, everything was okay.
Well, I think I know what you're getting at. And if you look at the memos that were provided by Mr. Bolzoni and then even before him, Tom Durk and the CFO, there were warnings that, in fact, I think one of them talked about the train coming down the track, and it's not good, like, it's hurtling towards us, and the commissioners aren't paying attention to it. Using one-time revenue sources, using gimmicks just to get by. So it was out there. I just don't think it was out there enough for people to say, whoa, what's going on? And that's unfortunate, but that's the reality of it.
Speaking of train coming down the track, I see a lot of publicity, our local legislators casing Cartwright talking about all this money they're bringing in from the Infrastructure Act for this train. Can any of that money be reallocated for like county uses instead of? You know, I think if you took a vote right now and said, would you want $40 million going towards trains in New York City? Or would you want $40 million to help the county of Lackawanna to pay for roads and bridges and essential things? This train is, to me, is non-essential. It's kind of like a pet project. Is there any way we could reallocate funds, whether it be from the train or any of these other pet projects, to essential projects and then relieve some of that taxpayer burden? Because I know we're gonna see ribbon cuttings and everything. Hey, we got $40 million for this train, blah, blah, blah. But I think if you put it on to a vote, taxpayers would say, we would rather that money spent on county roads and bridges. And things that could relieve some of the burden for the county taxpayers.
Well, those are federal funds, Mark, unfortunately, allocated through Congress. Congress would have to reallocate them. So you'd have to go back to Congress and they'd have to pass legislation.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
It's not some, it's not a vote we can take. If we could take a vote on it, I mean, that could be a different story.
Sure. Okay, I mean, that was just another suggestion. And lastly, I saw in the newspaper a couple of weeks back, the county commissioners were handing out grants to private businesses for various things. Was there a possibility we could suspend all grants, any non-essential spending? At this point, to me, it would be unfair for the commissioners to say to the taxpayers, we need a 32% increase, but here's money for this, here's money for that. Like grants, like not essential services, you know, public services, but just handing out grants to private businesses. I'm not against, you know, helping private businesses, but why would we be handing out money at a time when we're asking people to pay for it?
Well, I understand what you're saying, but we still have to help the small businesses. And that's one way that county government can. And there's money that's sitting in a pot in the county that's really not all that significant that if we did suspend it, it's not gonna touch $28 million. So our thinking is, why not get that money back out on the street and help the mom-and-pop shop or the small business in Music or Scranton or wherever to try to stay on their feet? I mean, it's kind of a catch-22.
Well, in addition, their community block grants, the commission, that can only be used, they come from the state that we can only use for that purpose. We can't allocate them elsewhere. The state won't let us do that.
And then the last thing, I think you touched on this earlier, would be like renegotiating contracts with labor, with vendors, things like that. Is that in the works?
Yeah, we're negotiating now, starting the negotiations with the SEIU union. And then every contract is under scrutiny in terms of if we can renegotiate them and get it at a lower price. And everything, we're putting everything that we can and that legally has to go out for bid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? No? Okay.
Uh, Lynn Kokinda, Music PA. Um, I'm going off of what a lot of people have said, so my notes are all over the place right now. But you said that there was a concern of the debt was raised. When was that raised? Because none of the citizens knew that the county had such a debt problem.
So it was, it was in the newspaper?
Yeah, and Ms. Bolzoni, I think, I think this is a great question for, for Mr. Bolzoni to jump in here and just kind of talk about the past couple of years and how we've gotten to this point. And when it comes pertaining to, for debt and, and the position.
For the debt to get that big, it sounds like it's not the last couple of years.
It's, it's not, it's the past several years. Dave, you wanna explain?
Well, it's not, and it's not a secret. And as the commissioners pointed out, um, I prepared fairly detailed memorandums for the commissioners over the last couple of years, just letting them know that what we were doing wasn't sustainable. So in twenty twenty-two, the preliminary budget deficit was four million. In twenty twenty-three, it was eight million. Twenty twenty-four, the preliminary budget deficit was fifteen million. So do the math. Okay, it's twenty twenty-five, you look at the compounding effect of using one-time revenues and not having sufficient revenues recurring to offset that. That preliminary budget deficit is only gonna increase. So now it's thirty million. So this isn't a secret, this has been going on for some time. The county's fund balance in two thousand seventeen is twenty-five million. It's been depleted because the county's been using the fund balance in order to be able to, uh, sustain the budget on an annual basis, plus the use of one-time revenues. When, as the commissioners pointed out, you probably really should have been looking at incremental adjustments to try and have revenues keep pace with expenses. Now, there's some other things, as the commissioners pointed out as well. You really have to get a grasp on the expense side of the budget. And that's something that they're trying to do. Because it's not just a revenue solution, it's an expense solution as well. You can't do one without the other. So again, this isn't really a secret, this has been going on for some time.
But most of the people in this room, including me, did not know that it was that bad. And I think that there should have been a red flag that everybody knew in the paper and the county, that the county is not working efficiently.
Well, ma'am, pardon me, it was bad, but I believe we're just the first ones to, to be honest about it and tell you about it.
And it was in the newspaper. If you go back and look in the archives, I know, cause I've read the articles, I don't wanna interrupt you, but it was in the, it was highlighted that, that you had the preliminary deficits and each year, and they were only getting bigger. So.
Okay. So you said there were mandated services by the state. Do any of these mandated services, can they be decreased? Are they too big, these mandated services for the county? Can we decrease some of the mandated, because it's a mandated service? Does it mean it has to be as big as it is right now?
So one of the things that we're, we have been doing the last several months, in fact, right when we took over and we hired, uh, these experts out of Philadelphia, was to look at every single department. And you'll see in the report right there, there's some recommendations on how we can become more efficient. We're gonna get a final report that's gonna be four or five sections, that's gonna have detailed recommendations on how each department can be more efficient. Criminal justice, uh, health and human services down the line. But in terms of the mandated services, for example, nine-one-one, we have, and I'll just use that as one example. We have a major problem in Lackawanna County, like they do all over the state, in getting dispatchers at nine-one-one. So it's not like we can go in and just cut nine-one-one. You need someone on the other end of the line answering the phone. So that's an example of a mandated service where you, there's really no area, uh, there to cut.
None of the mandated services can be cut?
Well, ma'am, again, we.
Are you looking into it?
We mentioned a little bit earlier, we cut overtime in the prison, we cut overtime in the sheriff's department. So, I mean, you might have human services, office of youth and family services, nine-one-one, the prison, the sheriff's department. And I, I touched on it a little bit earlier, I mean, you can, you can cut and take away jobs, but the shift, the, the shift is still there, we still have to be able to fill that shift. So as Commissioner Gahan just said, if you call nine-one-one, there's nobody answered, there's nobody answered the phone, what are you gonna do?
Okay, my next question is, do you guys get audited? And wouldn't this debt be a huge, huge red flag by the state? By everybody that you're not running it right? And if you increase taxes, you are not gonna increase your revenue because you're not gonna get small businesses or businesses or people to move in here. So unless you decrease and cut things, you're never gonna increase your revenue.
So if you look at the.
Besides hurting the citizens by increasing it by forty percent in two years.
So I would ask everybody here to look at the ratings review from Standard and Poor's. They review our debt, correct, Mr. Bolzoni? So they go in and they provide, stand, their name is Standard and Poor's, S and P. And that's why our, our debt has been downgraded. We have, or our credit rating has been downgraded through the years. In fact, it was just recently downgraded. Um, but if you go and look at their report, they clearly identify everything that we've talked about tonight in great detail. All the things that have been wrong with the county over the years. You know, the problem is, I don't really think the commissioners were reading that when they should have been. Uh, but that's all public information and that spells it out to a T onto kind of what the structural problems have been and what the inherent problems have been for the last ten or so years.
Okay, um, I'm gonna leave you with, you love civics, I know that from the Board of Elections meeting.
I do.
Um, and, um, you brought up your knowledge of civics and tried to shame people who wanted to voice their opinions at the Election Board Meeting in September. The definition of civics, a study of the rights and duties of the citizens. Civics education is key in teaching people the government has limitations and that every citizen has constitutional rights that cannot be taken away or violated. When he asked her a question, you should have been respectful enough to let her speak back. That was wrong. Thomas Jefferson said, "A wise and frugal government shall not take from the mouth of labor the bread it has earned." He also said, "Since you like civics, if a law is unjust, and man is not only right to disobey it, but obligated to do so, your increase of thirty-three percent is unjust."
Thank you.
I ask you, is it just for us to pay higher taxes so we can support the county's wasteful spending or service their debt? My time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioner.
Evening.
Room Cummings from Old Forge, thank you so much for coming to Music, close by my house, I can run up here right after work, I greatly appreciate it. And, um, I do like the budget hearings because they're always all around the county. Um, and I do appreciate you continuing all the things that I did to get messages across the county by still going out and meeting across the county for all the residents to come to your meetings, thank you. Very transparent and I do appreciate that. I had asked this very question, all these questions you were asking, and I feel self-vindicated right now, I just do. And I'm sorry that I have to say that. Um, but what I would like to ask and questions I didn't get answered is, in the midst of a, such a bad budget, why did we buy a medical building? And thank you for stopping that, uh, stopping the bleeding on that. I did look at the salaries and everything from that, and we should not have done that, and you're correct in getting rid of it. But I also read all the notes for the opioid committee for the money that I had helped get here in our county. And the committee is spending that money, um, in ways to start renting again in the, in the Mayfield Building that we got, we moved our domestics down here, is that correct? Or are they not gonna do that now? Cause I, I couldn't find an answer in the notes.
I'm, I'm not aware of that.
So in our, in the notes, they were thinking of going up to the Mayfield Building and I saw something about the incubator being utilized, but I would hope not.
Similar to what I said Frank earlier about his question going possibly to the prison board, I think if the next opioid fund settlement committee meeting, Miss Cummings, I think that might be.
I'll definitely attend, I didn't know when they were until I looked it up on the website and.
Yeah, I think it's every, every other, or every Tuesday, Don?
Uh, no, it's the second, second Tuesday of the month.
Second Tuesday of the month, yeah.
And Commissioner Cummings, uh, also, I'm gonna call you Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, we, the, the opioid committee actually has not spent any money at this point. They haven't allocated any funding to be spent. They were talking about a number of programs, but they haven't actually spent any of it.
Yeah, I could, and I couldn't see them future meetings, but I saw you got one point one mil in twenty twenty-two and five hundred and seventy-nine thousand in twenty twenty-three, which I'm so happy to hear that. And I'm hoping that we can use some of that money towards the general fund, which is what my intention was when I first filed for that, as you know, because we were at a C cap and we, we did that, so.
Correct.
Um, I am happy to see that that happened. Um, I know that I had stood in meetings and asked, why wasn't the media here for the past couple of years, especially when we purchased the building? And what are we doing with that? Do we still own it or what's happening with that? Cause I might have missed it, I came late, I apologize if I was.
So those discussions are ongoing, uh, on what we should do with the building, but we haven't arrived at a decision yet.
Cause I could not find a check allocated for that, and I was asking for a couple of meetings where that was paid for. The state was supposed to pay for that building. And then I was told, finally, it was through ARPA funds that it was paid. So do we get any money back from that or how does that work? Because it was only four million that was paid through ARPA funds or something, and then another million came from somewhere else. So do we have money coming back from that building?
The bulk of the money did come from the state.
Okay.
And because of that, we are obligated to hold that building for a certain period of time. If we try to sell it before that period is up, we would have to reimburse the state. So we, we, we're, we're gonna be holding on to the building for a little while yet.
So are we, we're paying all that? Cause what about the renovations now? Do we have to take a loan out to do all those renovations? Cause when I went up there, there was wires hanging from the ceiling when they first got it. And we paid for all the renovations, so I couldn't find that in the budget either, where those expenses were. And we were also renting space from Moses Taylor Hospital for that, and I couldn't find that allocated in the budget anywhere. So are we still, is that done now, are we still under lease with the Moses Taylor Hospital?
No, we are not, no, that lease has ended.
Okay.
We terminated that lease early, actually. Uh, once we had done away with the Department of Health, we had terminated that.
Okay, and, um, the local share account, I, I was always against that, but, um, the, um, arts funding, let me advise you. I tried to get rid of that, don't do it. Because I was, uh, change.org and, uh, all kinds of people came after me over that. And I tried very hard to get, get funding changed in that. So if you do do it, good luck. Um, I agree, it should be brought into the budget, cause that was never voted on. So you can change that funding, just so you're aware, cause I researched that in depth. Um, so that's just one suggestion, um, but we can allocate those funds on our own if the commissioners decide to do that, if you have the courage to get it done, and if you don't get a tax, be in the league for doing it. Um, and if there's ever anything I can help you with, I would be happy to. Cause I think you've been doing a stellar job, other than.
Thank you.
Some of the, um, back and forth, I, I wasn't too appreciative of that, but I understand the frustration and uh, I've been up there and I know what you're going through, so. Uh, good luck and, uh, I really do hope that you do well. And we are always gonna have tax increases if this stays the same. So I do appreciate what you're doing and I do appreciate all these people being here. Um, and I am a Republican, just so you know, I'm not siding with the Democrats, but we have to work together to fix this. And that's what we always try to do as public servants. And, um, I hope that I had done that in my time here. And that's why we consolidated all those offices into one building, so we weren't paying all those rents. And we tried everything we could to make sure we were saving money for the taxpayers. And I just wanna make sure I came here to say that, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening, everyone, John Rafferty, Old Forge. Um, you know, this is my first kind of county meeting, but it's both, uh, kind of enlightening but concerning as well, so. Just a couple more poignant questions, I think, on some of the topics that were raised, been raised earlier. I do have a question about the audit. Does the county actually employ or engage with auditors?
Yes.
Dave, Dave, do you wanna speak a little more on that?
We do, we're in the third year of a contract with a firm that is presently working on our prior year audit.
I suggest they get terminated.
They just report the information.
But how does an auditor, how does anybody escape previous calendar year or fiscal year bills? And how do you assure the public that that's not occurring today? And even more concerning, if you tell me there are auditors that have some oversight for that. I mean, you're really padding and burying previous fiscal year bills. And it sounds like it amounts to billions of dollars. Quite concerning.
Well, the, the basis of the audit is to report information. Now, they also include in there, in, uh, in notes that are provided to the audit, some concerns that they share relative to the operation. So what I would suggest is, read the audit, it's very informative and the information in there is very pertinent, uh, not only to the overall operation of the budget, to, but to the ongoing budget process itself.
But would an audit also look at performance measures? And again, expenses are supposed to be accrued or when they occur and ultimately paid in a normal sixty-day, ninety-period, so ninety-day period. So I, I just fail to see how anybody just that that's overseeing, that there's no oversight, that there's previous years built. How do we know, it's kind of like that's an unknown, that could, uh, very much be another red flag currently.
They report the information. It's up to the commissioners to be able to interpret that information and make changes based on some of the concerns that are brought up by the auditors.
So where's the systemic maybe change needs to occur, so we can prevent that from happening again?
You have a new administration who is paying bills, John.
Right, and I have an answer to that. What essentially they were doing was to stop paying bills in June or July, knowing that if they kept paying them, they were gonna run out of money before the end of the year. Is that an accurate statement?
For last year, that's very correct.
Right. So, and when we had brought PFM in, uh, sir, they had said, you're gonna run out of money in maybe October or November if you don't do something drastic. Spending freeze, hiring freeze, and then we had to literally borrow money in order to get through the end of the year to pay the tax anticipation. So I, I mean, that's, you, no government should run like that, that's insanity.
Right, any, any business, I don't, I don't understand.
Be out of business, right, you can operate like that.
And I, again, as issues came up, I was concerned, I, I felt like totally in the dark when you said that, you know, kind of the alarm has been raised previously by the CFO, you know, saying that we're kind of on a track of some financial peril. You, she was, and third, uh, commissioners, did you have an awareness of it before you actually took office?
Yeah, we, sure, we talked about when the, the debate that we had on ECTV, I think we both raised the issues of, of the finances, uh, of the county. Now, obviously, it's one thing to be the armchair quarterback and be on the outside, but when you get on the inside, you have a full picture of not only how bad the finances is, but how dysfunctional.
Yep.
It is, when you have people that aren't showing up, that aren't paying attention, and then aren't taking the advice of the people who have a background in finance.
Again, John, just to, to, to answer that, no. I, I did not know how bad it truly was until we got in there on January second. And I've used the example of it's kind of like an onion, the more we peel it back, the continued, the more, more layers there were to this thing.
And, and that is somewhat of a concern, I, last, my last comment is, you know, have we really, you know, really driven out the inefficiencies? You know, you mentioned the payroll thing, I mean, that's again the tip of the iceberg. But it seems like there's an awful lot more of efficiencies, technology. We can't continue to hire of, you know, we're providing a fifty percent, uh, benefit for healthcare. You know, that's not the future. So what are we really doing that's gonna really be a systemic change so that we're not, again, just kicking the can down the road here? Cause ultimately, we're paying the price.
Yeah, I agree. And because it's such a large bureaucracy, there's eleven hundred employees, over thirty departments, that's why people say, well, you're hiring consultants. Well, we hired one with the help of the state, because we need an extra help to come in and take a look at this entire operation. And let me be very clear with everybody in this room. This is, making county government more efficient is not gonna happen overnight. It's like turning a battleship around in a bathtub. It's going to take time. I think over the past few months, we've taken steps, but we're not riding in here like on a white horse, saying that we fixed everything. Um, we haven't, we haven't even gotten close, but we're starting to take steps to move in the right direction. But it's going to take time. But I think we're on the right path. I mean, you can't fix this type of thing and turn it around without a plan. And that's why we've hired this group, we've been working with the people that we brought on board and, you know, hopefully this time next year will be pointed even more in the right direction.
But yeah, I appreciate that answer, but I think, you know, it's, it's a painful price that the taxpayers are paying for that.
It is, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, well, thank you so much, everyone, uh, for being here tonight. Um, I would just like to say, thank the mayor and councilwoman for being. Um, I would just like to say, thank the mayor and councilwoman for being here, and all of you for, for being here and asking really good questions. And as I said to the gentleman before, if you think of any other questions, or you wanna know anything else, or have a question about the budget, email us, and we will do our best to get you the information, okay?
Tracy, tomorrow night, Waverly, Waverly Community Center at six o'clock, I believe. So, if you leave here, you forgot, you wanted to ask something, that's where we'll be tomorrow night. So, thanks so much, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There you go. Thank you.